So now it's time for council response. Any council members would like to respond?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Burns.
Before we start, the Vice President is here. Is she gonna take her meeting over?
Ms. Burns, you go ahead and proceed with your response.
That's not what I've asked you. Okay, thank you. So she is, so I'm... Listen. Councilwoman in the 2nd Ward, you're rude. I'm not even trying to be...talk to you. It's not even any secret. I don't care for you and you disrespect our resident. She's getting situated and I'm allowing her to do that so she can run her meeting, not your meeting. You're not the Vice President. You're not over Special Affairs. She is seated now, so therefore she says she will be taking over her meeting. You need to learn some manners. You're disrespectful. We're waiting. She's getting herself situated.
So are you done with your time?
This should not be my time. I had a question. I specifically stated. And the clerk should not have started the clock.
No, thi...this is your time, Ms. Burns.
No, that's not my time.
This is your time. Please proceed. Do not stop the clock.
If the Vice President...you are...this is not your meeting. The Vice President is seated.
Please proceed.
Are you gonna do your meeting again, this order? See, look, I'm gonna tell you something wrong with her. Something is seriously wrong with her. She has some issues. But I'm gonna say this. She took Ashley Capital check.
What?
She took one. Cyrus Park. And did not report on her campaign finance. So when you talk about why everything is getting sold, it's because they took Ashley Capital checks. And did not report it. That is a historic card. You incorp...you was the incorporated. And I'm gonna keep talking about it. Something's wrong with you. Your spirit ain't right. Your spirit ain't right.
240-158 in Special Affairs.
To everyone that is standing up in an aisle with the signs, please clear the aisle away. Thank you for everyone running back and forth with the signs. That is a cause of disruption. Please stay in your seats. Thank you. All right. Mr. Murphy, your motion was?
The motion was to leave...
Please, please, please stop.
Point of order.
Yes.
You just warned him. Uh, he needs a warning.
You all, you all have to relax and not do things that are distracting, do not be disorderly. I have asked once, Arthur Woodson, you are not here in this meeting. Please stop yelling out.
Point of order.
Yes.
The audience member, Arthur Woodson, cannot yell at the Chair that being disorderly and disrupting this meeting.
Arthur Woodson, that is your first warning. Arthur Woodson, that is your second warning. Please be removed.
I appeal the ruling of the Chair.
Absolutely, go ahead. Is there a second? Okay, it's been moved and properly supported. Councilwoman Burns, you have one minute. Please go ahead.
She needs to get the clock on first.
Yep, absolutely. Could you please make sure her time is correct?
So here we go, trying to...there is no rule that they cannot walk and hold a sign. That's just not true. You may not like the sign, but you can't control people walking.
All right, thank you, Councilwoman Burns. And the reason that I'm gonna stick with my ruling is because your appeal had nothing to do with my ruling. I ruled that that was Arthur Woodson's second warning. And so, because you didn't speak to anything having to do with his second warning, I will explain to you why he got his second warning. I gave him his first warning and he immediately yelled out again, which meant he didn't care about either warning. He understood he was being disorderly, continued to be disorderly. Therefore, he was warned for a second time. That is what the appeal should have been about. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Burns.
I abstain because the Chair is ruling unfairly and she shouldn't have been talking to the audience about that.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
Yes.
Mr. Allemann?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
No.
Thank you. Ms. Priestley?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes. Madam Clerk, I would like to change my vote to no.
The vote is...the vote is 3 yes, 4 no, 1 abstention?
The vote is 3 yes, 4 no, 1 abstention. The ruling of the Chair stands. Arthur Woodson, you are removed from this meeting.
You know what? I was hungry anyway. Big fat ass moose. You get ready to go lay some damn corn for your big fat ass. Lay down some deer feed. Take that damn horse sack off your back, you big fat ass.
Thank you. So as I was walking down the aisle, we had to move two tripod...tripods and the resident from the aisle. That's a fire hazard. No one should be blocking the aisles with their bodies nor with tripods when we have ample seating for every single resident. Furthermore, something so simple could be used for ill intent. A phone. What a phone could do. I see that my colleague is totally for the disruption of the people with the tripods and the blocking of the aisle.
Point of order. Point of order.
Oh, what rule has been breached?
Rule 43.21, her speaking to the motives of her colleague.
I take that. But, you know, but as I hear our colleague talk about what we're trying to disrupt and obstruct, one thing, one phone could be used to terrorize and harass. How do I know? Because the councilwoman in the 6th Ward drove an individual to my personal residence on April the 29th. She drove a man from Chicago!
This is my car and this is not the idea of the councilwoman. This is Jedidiah. And so we're going...I'm going to the councilwoman's house. I've asked my team to get the address. And I'm going to the councilwoman's address because I'm gonna knock on her door. Again, somebody say, "Don't knock on the door." Why would you do that? She is an elected official, a public servant. She needs to answer this question and I don't got time for public comment because they don't ask.
What's your point, Councilman?
She is...
No, 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 not you, not you, not you. Councilman Pfeiffer, what rule has been breached?
Um, the...
I took the Cyrus Park.
About relevant, that is not relevant to...
Whoa, 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 okay. Everybody, everybody relax. Everybody stay remain...excuse me, excuse me, colleagues, colleagues. Everybody relax. If you don't have the floor, relax. Councilman, um, Pfeiffer has the floor. Go ahead, Councilman Pfeiffer.
I don't think that that's relevant to tripods.
So, Councilman Pfeiffer, the relevancy was in her answering what a camera can do and how dangerous a camera can be. I think she was responding to something her colleague stated earlier, Councilman Pfeiffer.
Pardon me, Ms. Burns?
You may continue.
Oh, no, it's fine. I would definitely like to hear what Ms. Burn...Ms. Burns said as she pointed her finger at me. As she pointed at him, excuse me.
So pardon me, ladies, 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 please.
No, it's not a please. I have the floor and she shouldn't be speaking.
Okay, go ahead. You have the floor.
And so when someone bring a phone to your doorstep where you and your family stay, where my child lays his head, some random man to my house, she drove an individual there, put a phone out.
Um, please, one moment, stop the time. Councilwoman Winfrey Carter, what rule has been breached?
Madam Chair, this is not germane to the resolution on the floor. This is not germane.
Councilwoman Winfrey Carter, it was brought up by our colleague about cameras and what harm they could cause. This is her rebutting something that was brought up. Please continue.
I have a point of order.
Yes, ma'am. What rule has been breached? Yes, ma'am.
Number 1, she's speaking to my motives. She's not correct. I took that individual to Cyrus Park. You live across from Cyrus Park. I take it to your doorstep.
That, that is not so.
No, that is...
Okay, no, no, time out. We're not, we're not doing...we're not doing the back and forth. Continue.
Thank you. And so as the councilwoman parked blocking my driveway and the gentleman came to my door with his camera out.
Point of order.
Please stop the time. What rule has been breached?
She keeps speaking to the motives, 43.21. Not true. Did not block your driveway. There was a...you live across from Cyrus Park. He wants to know why, but you voting to give yourself money for Cyrus Park.
Okay, Councilwoman Burns, continue. Councilwoman Lewis.
We can clap all we want to, but this device brought up to your house where my family stay could be used as a weapon. So now my child is afraid to stay in that house because we have strangers. We have strangers coming up to the door with the camera in their hand on your personal property. I would never take any stranger or outsider to anyone's house. I would not do that. But as we clap and as we support this behavior that's taking place with this cell phone and it's all on Facebook, this was brought to my house. So as we take this device...
Please stop the time. I would like to ask the audience to please be quiet. There is someone that has the floor. Please allow them to speak. Thank you.
So as we take these devices, they're not just used to record the meeting, they're used to intimidate. They're used to disrupt these meetings. As we take these devices, we are putting them back at a...in a set spot. So if you would like to use your device, we will have a designated media area for you and your device. Feel free to get your technology with the appropriate Zoom. So each and every individual that would like to record these meetings, they will be able to do so. And so with that being said, that is why I support that. This is why I'm speaking of the individual who was brought to my home by Councilwoman Burns. This is why. When you bring someone to...someone home with ill intent.
Tripod.
Request for information.
What is your request?
So are we looking for someone to follow suit before we be proactive?
Councilman Pfeiffer, please continue.
Now we wanna be proactive about the safety of the City of Flint. How about we be proactive and not have City of Flint Police bring you to city council meetings? That's all we do.
Request for information. Request for information.
What is your request?
Would I need the police to bring me if people were not bringing strangers to my home compromising my safety?
Councilman Pfeiffer, please continue. Can we please stop yelling out over there? Thank you. Please stop yelling out.
I just think with all of the issues that this council has with council members taking money in the back door and everything else, we need to be as transparent as possible. So trying to hide cameras in the back of the room, to me, that is more of a issue than trying to hide what we're doing up here. If you're so proud of what you're doing, and to me, the 9th Ward was a canary in the coal mine, if you're not paying attention, you're on your way out the way you guys are There's a new day coming and I promise you, I promise you, I'll look forward to that
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like the floor in the first round of discussions?
And let me be perfectly clear. The gentleman is a podcaster. He wanted to know why you voted to give yourself $75,000. When the park...the park was giving $75,000 Cyrus Park and the house across the street had a blown off, tattered, blue tire. So the people that live in the house gonna have to live in the park. I didn't bring that man to your house purposely. You voting to give yourself money and not putting it on your campaign finance. Didn't put it on your campaign finance. Did not. You know, you did not show it to him. Can you warn her? I'm talking, she needs to be quiet. Furthermore, you become the perfect victim. You were never called a monkey. The Michigan State Police report where you were getting rides, let's say it should pick up on your camera, said no one was going to rape you, that it wasn't true. You said that $20,000 was supposed to be returned. We found out tonight, that was not true. Not that every park returned a penny. But you always know what the criminals are doing. That man is not gonna harm you. He wants to talk to you. You can knock on the door. Y'all done sent plenty of them to my door and put an apple trap on my vehicle. So I'm not thinking about...you worried about cameras up here? You should be...
Second round.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman Lewis, you have the floor.
Thank you. Call for the question.
All right, there is a call for the question. Is there support? It's been called and supported. Roll call, member?
Mr. Pfeiffer? Mr. Allemann?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
The vote is 5 yes, 3 no?
The vote is 5 yes, 3 no. So we will now call for the question, which is to move 240181 Designated Videography Area City Council Chambers to the council. Roll call, member?
Mr. Allemann?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
I abstain because I want everybody to bring in their camera in the next meeting
The vote is 5 yes, 2 no, 1 abstention?
The vote is 5 yes, 2 no, 1 abstention. Resolution 240181 Designated Videography Area City Council Chambers has been moved to
Under arrest. Violator shall be removed from the meeting. And so with that being said, I see that Mr. Woodson is back in this meeting and he was removed for...from the meeting for the day. So I would ask for Mr. Woodson to please remove himself from the meeting. What is your point?
If you read it, it states that it can...council members cannot return. It does not state residents.
Well, according to the, um, to the Chair and Mr. Woodson be...
Madam Chair, that's not...
And Mr. Woodson disorder conduct.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, it is specific that it states you cannot add in something. That should have been done after the rule changed. It does not state...it says council members. It does not say the public. You can't add in public.
Okay, Mr...thank you, Ms. Burns. Attorney, um, Kim, could you please clarify?
That means that it's silent as to residents. So that will be a matter for the body to determine how that...how that should be applied to residents. So that's up to the body to decide.
Okay, so is that the pleasure of this body? Okay, so the Chair will entertain a motion to remove Arthur Woodson from this meeting for disorderly conduct and meeting disruption from previous meeting.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Do you realize that you will need 2/3 vote for this? Because you are not...this, the rule says...
Ms. Winfrey Carter, you have not been acknowledged. You have not been acknowledged. So, um, so, so we're looking for a motion.
Request for information?
What is your request?
Madam Chair, do you realize that you will need 2/3 of a vote in order to change a rule?
The rule's not here.
This would be a change of a rule.
The rule is not changing. Only thing, this body is voting. So, um, so the Chair will entertain a motion for this, either voted up or down. So, um, and I would ask, Attorney Kim? So is a...is a motion in order?
That would be up to...that'd be up to you as the Chair to determine if the motion's in order.
Thank you. So with that being said, the Chair will entertain a motion to remove Mr. Arthur Woodson from this meeting.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to remove Arthur Woodson from this meeting.
Okay, thank you. Is there any support? I'll support.
Madam Chair?
Did I...Ms. Priestley, did I hear you support? All right, so it has been supported by the councilwoman in the 4th Ward.
Madam Chair?
Go ahead, Mr. Pfeiffer.
So this is another posted meeting. So everything resets for the public. You cannot exclude a member of the public without being sued again. So if we want to exclude a member of public and, and open the city up to more litigation, or we can just conduct business the way that we should be.
I don't remember the exact citation off the top of my head. I could find it if you...
Where we can...where we can...we can tell one person that they can't come in?
The question is whether the...whether it's legally a separate meeting when the meetings are noticed collectively.
I'm sorry, we have two different...we have two different meetings. This is two different chairs. This was posted for two different times. It says that this meeting starts at 5:30.
Frankly, I would be happy to generate this in the form of a written legal opinion for the body.
Well, the written legal opinion isn't gonna help Mr. Woodson and his rights to stay in this separate meeting.
Open Meetings Act, hey, that means the doors are open. Everyone's welcome. You called this meeting to order. It's a brand new meeting. You said a prayer, which I don't pray with Councilwoman Priestley at all. You said the pledge of allegiance. Welcome to everybody. And then at the onset, because this is a new meeting, we didn't go back to pick up the old meeting because we adjourned the last meeting. It was done. Adjourned, stop. Arthur Woodson has a right to stay in this meeting like any other person. You better look at that Open Meetings Act. You better look at that Open Meetings Act.
I don't care how much you disagree with people, but to be calling people out their name, you are a man. This is a woman. Regardless whether you like her or not, you have no business calling her out her name. This is somebody's wife. This is somebody's daughter. This is somebody's mother. This is somebody's sister. And you sit here and you constantly call her out her name and I'm sitting here listening to it. Just think, if you go into the white family and you call their family members out and call them out their names... I'm just saying, you wrong on all kind of levels and I'm not gonna sit up here and sugarcoat.
Oh, stop the time. We have a request for information.
I...I want to make sure that I heard him correctly. He has stated, um, he stated that you had...you were being called out of your name repeatedly, which was not your name. I believe that's what he was saying. But you did call me a bitch, Councilwoman Lewis.
Ms. Burns, Ms. Burns, according to Robert Wolford, that is totally not germane. So you're being brought to order. Proceed, Mr. Murphy.
And what I'm saying to the fellas out here, if you hear men talking to women like that and we don't denounce it and we don't say nothing about it and we don't stop it, we just is wrong. I never sit in the room and see a woman get disrespected and call her...
Please stop. Ms. Mohammed, that is your warning.
I appeal the ruling of the Chair. And I support that appeal.
That's fine. So if you would like to overturn the ruling of the Chair, vote yes. But if you would like to support the ruling of the Chair, vote no. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Allemann?
No.
Ms. Lewis?
No.
Mr. Murphy?
No.
Ms. Priestley?
No.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
Yes.
Ms. Burns?
Yes.
Ms. Michelle?
No.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
I abstain because there's no way you heard only Ms. Mohammed and that's the only person you called out because that's the only person you know their name.
Ms. Worthing is absent. The vote is 2 BS?
Yes.
5 no, 1 abstention?
5 no and 1 abstention. So that warning stands. It's not about who you like and who you don't like. It's about getting the business of the city done. That's what it's about.
Let it go like we let it go when you called us J. Let it go!
And so, ma'am, better work. Thank you. All right, so that is your second warning. Ma'am, you're disrupting the meeting.
I repeal the ruling of the Chair.
Ma'am, you're disrupting the meeting.
I appeal the ruling.
Ma'am, you're disrupting the mo...ma'am, you're disrupting...ma'am, you're disrupting the meeting. According to the Sole Report Subsection, you are on your second warning, so therefore you are to be removed from this meeting. Ma'am, would you please, officers, could you please remove her from the meeting?
There is an appeal, officers!
Could you please remove her from the meeting? She's in violation of the Sole Report Subsection. And she's refusing to come to order. Thank you.
There's an appeal, officers! You have to wait till we remove her.
Yes, you can.
You have to wait till her appeals, officers!
No, according to the Sole Report Subsection, you do not.
She just do whatever she want. This...oh, Lord.
Better not put your head on here. Who yells in this big black guy? Take that! From Jamaica looking low, take that!
Mr. Pfeiffer? Ms. Worthing is absent. Mr. Allemann? The vote is 5 yes, 3 no?
Could you say it again, Madam Clerk?
The vote is 5 yes, 3 no?
The vote is 5 yes, 3 no. The, um, so that call for the question passes. So now we're about to vote for the removal of Arthur Woodson from this council meeting. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Priestley?
Yes.
Ms. Winfrey Carter?
No.
Ms. Burns?
No.
Ms. Michelle?
Yes.
Mr. Pfeiffer?
I abstain because MCL 15.263 Subsection 6 says no member of the public shall be removed for cause without disrupting a meeting.
Ms. Worthing is absent. Mr. Allemann?
No.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes. Yes.
The vote is 4 yes, 3 no, 1 abstention?
The vote is...one more time?
4 yes, 3 no, 1 abstention?
The vote is 4 yes, 3 no, 1 abstention. That makes it fair.
And Genesee Colleen, in the face! When y'all know the truth and y'all don't wanna tell the truth, and then you get mad at us because we bring it out. I'm in the neighborhood till 4:00 and 6:00 AM in the morning, I'm talking to people, they don't like none of y'all. 2, 3, 4, and 6, they don't love none of y'all. Especially you two, uh, Judy, cuz you be lying talking about you for the people over there. They say they haven't seen you get nothing over there, but they, you got your kitchen done. So at the end of the day, bring asking, uh, and appoint an order, it's my time.
Ma'am, pause the time.
You, you don't like what I said?
My colleague's kitchen does not have-
I, I don't care, this is my-
Ma'am.
With-
There you go.
Resolution 2401-
Okay.
-to 5 points says, "Public hearing vacation of easement of 2201 Industrial Boulevard." Her kitchen is not on the-
Okay, okay, I'll take that bet.
So now we're moving on to Public Hearing 240131.6. It is a public hearing amended brownfield plan for Dupont Industrial Facility, and that's at 1809 James P. Coles Boulevard. And it is a public hearing to consider the approval of the amended brownfield plan for the Dupont Industrial Facility at 1809 James P. Coles Boulevard. And again, let's make sure that we are being germane to this specific resolution or, um, you will be stopped. So proceed.
Arthur Woodson, boy, I'm having fun, man, we got two more left too. So I got, that's like 12 minutes to talk, and you hate it too. I should just stand up here and laugh. I'm still here. No fun, man, I just had to say that, right? And you swear brownfield so that they can come over here and take our dollars. Damn! And I bet you vote for it, Liddell, because you don't care about nothing but Cyrus Park. And you swear, I'm moving straight forward, I'm moving straight forward.
Sir, let's stay germane.
Man, that is germane, I just said that you not gonna vote for this, you gonna vote for this brownfield because you don't care about nothing but Cyrus Park. That's germane, because you don't care about nothing else but parks, boo-boos.
Sir, let's stay germane, that's your other warning, let's stay germane.
What warning?
To stay germane.
What warning? I am germane. Oh, you gave me a warning?
Let's stay germane.
Did you give me a warning? Did you give me a warning?
Let's stay germane.
I'm asking, did you give me a warning?
We're staying germane.
Did you give me a warning?
Point of order.
Did you give me a warning?
What is your point?
Um, are you giving the Speaker a warning, if we have clarity, please? I'm, I'm sorry.
No.
Did you say no? No, thank you.
Because I thought, I, I thought I heard a warning, uh-
Let me talk quick. Any more speakers?
I know I'm finna get put out, so let me talk quick. Um, I wanna talk about 240166, uh, page 4, about these appointments and 240177. The appointment of-
Ma'am, this is-
Lewis and Priestley-
Ma'am. Ma'am, ma'am, that's your warning, you are not brought to order.
Don't have no decorum.
That's your second warning.
I'm leaving, but you don't have no decorum.
Officers, would you please-
How dare you! How dare you try to put somebody else out?
You're not being, we're trying to bring you to order.
I'm going, but I'll be back next meeting. I won't forget. Crooks. Word one, you a disgrace to that seat. Anyone know for the public hearing?
240145, in order to amend the Flint City Code of Orders by amending Chapter 33, Parks, Section 3316.1. And this is regarding the hours and exceptions.
Did you say we talking about-
So first, public speaker?
Are we talking about parks? Hey there, boo-boo! Let's get the picnic basket. Yogi. Councilwoman, second word, Yogi Bear, listen. Here's the problem that we have with this.
You're out of order, stay germane, that's your warning.
For what?
You're calling, you called the Councilwoman the name. You're out of order.
You can't stop me from saying that. You can't stop me from saying her name.
Again.
Are you crazy?
No, I'm not, but you will be germane, so let's go.
Anyway, Yogi Bear.
No, don't listen to them.
Hey, hey, hey. Ain't nobody, hey, y'all, skip her, don't worry about her. Because she, uh, she still, after I get done with this one right here, after I get done with pu- public speaking, y'all gonna kick me out anyway. Y'all just sit up here and just, just, just write stuff, man. Like, 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 oh, guess what? I'm gonna try to dictate what the Flint Board of Education do, guess what?
Um, Mr. Woodson, again, you have been warned to stay germane.
What are you talking about, it's Flint Board of Education on here.
Pardon me?
Did you read it?
This is about the parks.
Did you read where it says, "Planning and Development or the Flint Board of Education"? Did you read this? See, you just vote for stuff and don't read. See, that's what's wrong with you. Now read it! I give you my 55 seconds to read it. Stop trying to talk and stop people from talking and read shit. That's your problem. Sit around here with a doctorate and degree and always thinking you smart and you ain't nothing, you don't think, you don't-
Thank you, Mr. Woodson, that's your time.
You gotta go somewhere, that's 35, I got 35 seconds, you stopped me.
That's your time, Mr. Woodson.
You stopped me and said I wasn't germane.
Mr. Woodson, that's your time.
Hey, anyway, ah, yeah, that's what I've been waiting on. Quincy Murphy. You, I thought, well, I knew you was gonna be an emotional being on here because you emotional. You carry, you, you real feminine. Clap your hands, get all emotional when somebody say something, you act like just because you elected official, you got a title, can't nobody say shit to you? You got shit fucked up, bro. I'm serious, all the way. Because that big ass moose right there, she stands up here and coming out to people, man, y'all can't stop me, freedom of speech, man. Freedom of speech.
What's your point, Mr. Murphy?
Um, my colleague, um, the, um, resident, Arthur Woodson, is calling you out your name.
Absolutely, and that falls under the City Code Subsection of harassment, so Mr. Woodson, you have been asked multiple times to stop. And so, this will be your second warning. This is your second warning, Mr. Woodson.
Hey, y'all don't have to appeal, you don't have to appeal because that big ass fucking moose is shit.
So, Mr. Woodson, that's your second, thank you, that's your warning. So you will, you are removed from this meeting, thank you.
Quincy make me move some ice cream, I'm throwing in ice cream with my mother.
So, so, there, there's no, there's no going back and forth with the audience, that's what he is. And what is your point?
Thank you, because all cing must stop, must stop. Rule 27.2, Councilwoman Murphy cannot go back and forth with the audience he's leaving.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Burns, so next public speaker, please.
Point of order. What's your point? My point is, I ain't going back and forth, he just called me a bitch.
My name is Beverly Diggs Levy. I'm in the 3rd Ward. And you guys are the sorriest bunch I've seen. One, two, three, second, third, and fourth. You, you clowns. That's what you are, you clowns. If one more get up, you know, we can break home because everybody ready to go, I know you ready to go to work, Quincy. I know you ready to go to work. Liddell, you going over to, you calling people and telling them you mad at them for signing the petition. Look like that, like you don't know what's going on, you, you good, you good at looking like, ah, I don't know what you talking about, you know what I'm talking about. You gonna take their houses, you gonna do this, you gonna do that. You can't do deadly what? We want you out of that seat so bad, you know we do. Eleven hun, eleven hundred and eighty-eight signatures? What you think about the people? But you too good to get down, right? Quincy, I'm so close to you, I, I'm tired. I'm tired. But you ain't got but three more weeks, and I will be turning in. So, clap, clap for that, you clap for everything else. You gonna lose your job. Boiling around with Liddell and that, that woman right there, Judy Priestley. You gonna lose your job. But I'm going to get someone, I already have someone for you, Judy, you're next. You are next. We're gonna get all you, uh, foolish five out. Candace ain't even got a chance. Everybody want her out. So when it's time to vote, she ain't got a chance. Not a chance. We're gonna change these seats. You got your, you got 1st Ward, whatever you, he's, he's a yes man, just like the 7th Ward is a yes girl. But she can ta, downgrade everybody else, but she couldn't downgrade her daddy for 190 counts. A rate, 1, 9, 0. Liddell, you stealing food stamps that you won't even pay your neighbor. Won't even give her her money back. That's a darn shame. You know you got them food stamps and you bought food for your house. Why you didn't get that girl her money? Because that's the type of person you is. You need to take that rabbit money hat off the top of your head, put something in your forehead, bring them bangs down, because you got the biggest forehead there ever was.
Thank you, Beverly Diggs Levy. Any, uh, next public speaker?
About Women Empowering Women. All of you should have gotten a copy of this in your email. This is to Candace Michelle, which left, she left, so I'm gonna still read it. And this is from the Concerned Women in the City of Flint. And this is regard to the attack on Jerry Winfrey Carter of the 5th Ward. We the understand, undersign, admonish your horrendous treatment of 5th Ward Councilperson Jerry Winfrey Carter. In your position as Vice President of the Flint City Council, your blatant disrespect towards your colleagues indicates the lack of maturity necessary to be regarded as a leader in a community and warrants a community response. Your chastisement of Councilperson Winfrey Carter during council meeting creates a hostile environment. The voice of each Councilperson has extreme value in the decision-making process. While you criticize Winfrey Carter, it would be wise to look back at your own behavior and conduct. Your most recent outburst at the City Council Meeting held on Monday, April 22nd, 2024, was an unwarranted and unnecessary attack on the character of your fellow Councilperson Winfrey. You engaged in an unprofessional, deplorable, demeaning, insulting, malicious, belittling personal attack. This is totally unacceptable. We demand that you end this immature abuse and become focused on the real needs of our community. Currently, there are 107 women who have signed this letter. Some of them are Atthea Barbie, Shirley Hill, Maxine Murray, Myra Hughes, Donna Poplar, Lottie Reed, Kim Robbins, Estella Simpson, Denise Walters, Brenna Williams, Brenna Clack.
Next public speaker, Madam Clerk.
And the last speaker is Stephanie Rogers.
Well, as the saying goes, y'all suck the best for last.
Okay, so seeing that there is no one else, I'll go ahead and take my time. Um, I would like to address the letter sent from Ms., um, Rita Stanley to Councilwoman half of the Women Empowering Women. That's one of the examples. And this is the same colleague that threatened to stab a colleague's tires. This is the same, what is your point? Well, the Council will stand at ease until a count, until a quorum is regained? Alright, so it is 11:47, this meeting is adjourned for lack of quorum. Have a good evening.
I got her, I said something.